All right, well, I see here on my computer at six o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call our Sandy work session to order. Jeff, will you call the roll?
Yes, Councilor Petezel.
Here.
Councilor Smallwood.
Yep.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hokinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here, thank you, Jeff. So for some of our newer counselors, some of you may know this, some of you may not. And we start off with a review of our city council meeting at these work sessions. This provides an opportunity for not necessarily discussion on items that are on our council meeting tonight, but any clarity or questions that you may have, or some homework that you may want staff to kind of inquire about on a particular topic as we go into it tonight. So I'll review tonight's agenda and kind of pause for any questions or input on any one item. And then we'll go ahead and proceed with our work session tonight. And so, starting out, changes to the agenda. Will there be any changes, proposed changes to the agenda tonight?
I had one question about the agenda, Mayor.
Sure.
Which was in the consent agenda, there's a proposal for, I believe it's the Parks Board for Mary Casey. Whereas the other board members for the Budget Committee are, have their own items. Should that be in the consent agenda, or should it just be its own item?
Yeah, I'm certainly open to have a conversation about it. I know in the past what we've done with a lot of these board appointments. And Dawn is, is we've had a couple of different liaisons from our council serve on the committee along with usually like the committee chair that participates. And because those recommendations for the most part are unanimous, we usually just put that on the consent agenda. As for this Budget Committee, we haven't had that process. It's a little bit of a different process for your Budget Committee. It's in our charter, for example, we have an application process, and so that's treated a little differently. But if we want to take outside of our consent agenda, the Parks and Trails Board appointments, I'm okay with that. It's just usually.
No, I'm not. I'm not. It was more a question for procedure, so I'm not suggesting that at this time.
Okay, cool. Any other questions on our agenda or changes? Yeah, Kathleen?
Thank you, Mayor. I did ask Jeff earlier, because I was kind of wondering about the same process questions, and whether or not the applications for the Budget Committee were, could be attached or included. But that, so that's one thing I was going to kind of raise, and I don't know whether to bring that up now or later. I just didn't want to surprise anybody. But thank you.
I think, yeah, I think this works great now. Jeff, you can address it. I know we saw an email from you earlier this evening.
Yeah, so I want to, I want to thank you, Councilor Walker, for bringing that to my attention earlier this afternoon. We had just accidentally neglected to add those, so we did go ahead and add them. They're on the agenda. We also sent an email to the council a couple of hours ago, so my apologies for that.
Okay, any other questions about the agenda tonight? All right, great. So then we'll go to the consent agenda. Any questions on the minutes or on the Parks and Trail Advisory Board appointments on there? Okay, under new business, we have that Budget Committee appointment process. Is there any more questions on the Budget Committee deal? All right, we'll then move forward into our report from our city manager, and we'll round off the evening with our counselor and committee reports. Any questions on those? Yeah, Jeremy?
Yeah, just actually, I did have a question about the Budget Committee appointments, and I got the email earlier. And I opened up the link just now, and that answered my question, so. I think the email earlier I saw was who was applying, but not necessarily who was already there from last, or maybe from the last time, because the positions roll. Is my understanding that right? There are some people that were from the last budgetary committee?
Yeah, good. I know Fritz, I think continues on, but I think Kathleen, because she's now a city counselor, probably just doesn't roll on in that capacity, but does in another. Am I right?
That's correct. So just a brief background, Budget Committee needs to have an equal number of participants as the number of counselors there are, so seven in our case. We had six open positions due to Councilor Walker becoming a council member, various other positions, terms expiring. Someone else moved out of the boundary, so we had six open positions, received the six applicants. Fritz was the only returning member of the Budget Committee from the last go around. Thanks.
Yep. Thank you. So that concludes my review of the agendas. Are there any other questions or comments before we proceed with our work session?
Um.
Yeah, go ahead.
Given the topic we're about to undertake, this, once again, I apologize for these procedural type questions, but I'm trying to learn. So we're going to talk about this upcoming subject. Will, but we don't vote on it in a work session, right? So do we potentially then, would we take it into the council meeting as a new line item, new agenda item?
Yeah, Dawn, I was thinking about that too. I think it depends on how, you know, obviously it depends on our discussion, how far along we get. But if we feel comfortable with something that we can all call S behind, I see no reason why we couldn't put it on our agenda, changes to the agenda tonight. I also, I need to have the conversation with probably Jeff and Jordan, but might be even something that if we have some real broad directions for staff, we can add at the very beginning of our goal, one of our goal setting meetings or something, just to get it voted on in a timely fashion, but I'm open for all those things.
Good. Thanks.
Yep. All right, great. So with that, why don't we go ahead and start off our work session tonight? We have a discussion regarding our council position on COVID-19 restrictions issued by the governor. And I know that there's a staff report attached to this. Jordan or Jeff, did you just want to start us with the staff report?
Yeah, it's a really brief staff report. I think what we want to do is just highlight some of the topics that we heard from city counselors at the previous meeting, and then by comments submitted to staff in the meantime, between that meeting and this meeting. Really, we didn't work on any draft of a proposed statement. I think we'd heard a lot of different ideas of what the council may be talking about tonight, and maybe what the outcome is either tonight or the future meeting. That could be a letter, it could be a statement from the council, could be a resolution. But we heard a lot of common themes, and in that brief staff report, we kind of bolded those, those themes. You'll see that they're very similar to the topics that were discussed at that council meeting about the COVID-19 restrictions and orders that are, you know, particularly burdensome on local small businesses. The fact that the city respects and will comply with all laws and orders that are legally binding on the city. You know, asking the governor to amend restrictions in these extreme risk counties to allow these businesses that have these restrictions to open under the same requirements that other businesses are currently open under. And that the state should be working, and the governor should be working on other possible options and all avenues to provide support to our local small businesses. I know there's many more. The counselors have ideas. I know individual counselors may have have their own statements or own ideas that they, they wanted to talk with this group as a body here in a work session. So again, this is kind of, you know, the council's prerogative and how you guys get there. And we're happy to support you, either, you know, during this meeting or in between, to help draft something if that's the outcome, whether that's a letter or a statement, and then bring that back for council adoption. There is, you know, this is a work session, so, you know, as the mayor indicated, if the, if the outcome is to adopt something tonight, we can definitely add that to the agenda, or the council can decide to put that on, you know, the next meeting in February or one of our goal setting sessions. So you can at least maybe get some public comment in between, or, you know, circulate the draft before the next, next meeting. So I am happy to turn that back to the council now, to start your conversation. Again, this is a work session. You know, a chance to kind of talk through these ideas and share the ideas that I know you guys have with each other. Thanks.
Thank you, Jordan. And just a couple of comments to leave us off. One is, as I look through the, the broad points on the staff report that staff put together for us, I, I just want to reiterate, I, I don't have any qualms or problems with anything that I see listed on, on the staff report as far as general themes. Through my, that and some of my conversations with different counselors, a couple of items I've just highlighted, that I just wanted to go through and kind of put my position on, and then open up for discussion. One is, is, so one theme I hear is calling on the governor to consider the totality of her mandates and restrictions, and to look at loosening those restrictions. I obviously am, I am fine with that. Another broad theme I hear is reaffirming our city government's commitment to following the mandates, restrictions, and guidelines. I'm, I'm totally good with that. You know, every, you know, I've been outspoken on this issue, but I've never, I've never advocated for our city government or our city to not follow the law or the mandates of the governor. So I'm absolutely fine with, with those things. Then the only, the only thing I think that could come up, that I'm hearing, that I would be a little bit remiss on is, is I would look to refrain from talking points on individual businesses' very personal decision whether to open or to remain closed. I have yet to see any city, whether neighboring or otherwise, come out with a position that encourages businesses to remain closed. I, I just, I, I think we should probably refrain from a city council position on what individual businesses may or may choose not to do. I don't, we should certainly, as a city, encourage businesses to open as a united body. I think we should be sure of that, and I'm totally fine with that. I just would, I would have a little bit of some issues of encouraging them to stay closed, because I know we do have some businesses in this community that are making a hard personal decision to open. And I just think as city leaders, we should be, you know, not, maybe not encouraging as a city body, but, but definitely supportive of our local business owners who are having to make pretty unprecedented decisions right now. But that's kind of where I'm at on these issues. I think there's a lot of room for broad agreement on our council, and I look forward to our conversation. I'll look for any hands. Anybody want to get us started? All right, all right, Carl, go ahead.
Okay. I got to talking to a number of different folks over the last week or so, week and a half. And I hopefully, I sent a note out for folks about lunchtime today, because I just wanted to kind of get you kind of thinking about the same things that I was thinking of, and kind of where I'm coming from. Much of what the mayor just talked about, there's a few tweaks maybe in some of that, but I think in terms of what I would like to see, I would like to propose, is that we come up with at least some sort of of statement of how we feel in terms of this particular issue, and how it kind of would guide us in terms of conversations that we have in the next, whatever time it takes to get through this. Hopefully soon, but I am not a pessimistic person, but I don't see it going away soon. I think that there will be months before we have some sort of clarity where we can start opening back up again, but I think that's up to hours more than enough. But I would like to see us have some sort of statement, and like I said, I sent a kind of a letter out proposing some things that might be worth chatting about. And some things I put at the very beginning of my statement was more of about some general policy kinds of statement. I was looking at the staff letter, and I thought that there were several things in there that were pretty close to what I thought. The only thing that I would be hesitant about would be telling our businesses to stay open, and contrary to the governor's rule, or to stay closed because of their choices that they have. That's, I think, pretty much up in their particular decision. I know that there are some businesses that are choosing to open or choosing to close at this point, and I believe that's a business decision from their viewpoint. But I think that as a council, we should look at the possibility of other ways to support our businesses, our citizens. And I think it should be more than just businesses. I think there are some things going on in our particular city that have to do with residences. And for example, there's a lot of fear going on right now. People are concerned about why the vaccine isn't coming to them in terms of what they thought was a priority. Some people are concerned about even getting out. I have clients that are not willing to go outside of their house for fears, and I think that there may be some education we could do. There may be some events that we can use to be able to make the cities, citizens and businesses more comfortable with what we're going to have to go through. And I think as leaders of this community, and I consider us the leaders of this community, that there are things that we should step out in front of and be able to talk about so that the folks that look to us, we were voted, we were selected by vote about how to lead our city, and I think that's really important. So I just real quickly, I have six real quick points, and I'm going to just be quiet after that. One was, we should be an advocate for obeying the law, and that's something the staff had already exposed in that staff letter. We should be an advocate for safety for everybody. That's, to me, that's protecting folks from getting the coronavirus, as well as safety for those who are concerned about, they want to be out and around. We should be an advocate for fairness and even handedness. Some of our businesses are not being treated fairly. In contrast, for other things, I think that we should be careful about how we make decisions about how different folks are being impacted by our decisions. Must bear, made our decisions on facts. So much of this is an emotional thing. I think we should really be focused on our facts and where we stand with science, and how that should impact our decisions. We should be an advocate for people that are in Sandy. We were elected by people that are from Sandy, not by people that in the state. I really think our issues are best kept, and I understand that there are issues that are outside the city that come in and affect us as a city, but I think we should focus on the city's issues as much as we can. Otherwise, we don't have time. We typically don't have time to get all of our issues resolved. I think it's important to resolve the ones that are Sandy issues. And lastly, I think however this all works out, we should be respectful of each other. Make sure that we all talk to each other in a respectful and deferred way, so that we don't end up getting into a position where we're leading our folks to increase that tension I see all around me. I've been in a couple of conversations this past two weeks about this situation, about this thing about we're trying to talk about tonight, and it escalated very quickly into some, I call it road rage, because I was standing in a a parking lot, maybe it's a parking lot rage, but they got pretty excited pretty quickly, and it took some time to be calmer. And I think that as a leader, I need to be able to keep this tension from going up. I think it needs to be mellowed out. So those are the things I thought we should be thinking about, in terms of how we make these decisions. And I advocate for a letter to the governor, asking them to rethink some of the restrictions. I think that our restaurants and gym people can really come up with some very safe, very logical, very fact-based ways to open up and be safe. I'm not willing to say what they are right now, but I, because I think that some of those facts aren't clearly yet, but I think we do need to write a letter to the governor. Sitting there. So for the moment, that's it for me.
Thanks, appreciate it. Yeah, Dawn?
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. Carl, I, I think those principles, or however you want to label those, I think they're a great idea. It's like, they're just, you know, they, they, they're true regardless of situation you throw in front of them, so that's what, that's what makes them nice. I would like to add a few things, because I've been thinking about this a lot, and I've mentioned to some of you as we've got to know each other, that I tend to be an opposing force. Whatever the discussion is, I will tend to go to the other extreme just to get some balance in the middle. And in this case, I feel like I might, I need to come back to the middle a little bit on that. So for, but I would like to bring up a few points here that I think are important for us. First is, this discussion has been really up to now, not just today, but I mean, our previous discussions and even online are really business centric. And I think we need to expand that. It's, this is a family problem. This is a individual problem. This is a mental health problem. And I don't think that's getting enough attention, so I would love to see if we put together a statement that we encourage other risk factors to be considered in the governor's matrix. I mean, the governor considers case counts, testing, a small set of demographics around how many people live in your county, and the male, female, gender, but not much, age, considers hospitalizations, emergency room visits. Does not consider mental health, doesn't consider financial being, family health. Doesn't consider the, the growing, and there are some things that we don't like to talk about, but growing social unrest, right? That is not a risk factor in the governor's matrix right now. And yet, and maybe, and maybe a year ago, it wasn't a big deal. Maybe that wasn't a concern, because we were just in a pause for a few short weeks, right? But we're not in a pause. This is a stop. Everything we're seeing on the news says that any estimate of when this is over is not well informed. We don't know when it's going to be over. We might be in a seasonal thing for a long period of time till we get our, ourselves figured out. And so what works for a pause isn't going to work. The second thing, and I'll just get them all out here quick, is when you look at some of the statements that say this particular shutdown isn't effective, it's not, there's no science behind shutting down a club or something else. Those aren't really true statements, and I'm going to make a bold, but think of it from a statistics perspective. If you put all the business categories on a list, and you randomly pick a subset of them to shut down, you would reduce the spread of COVID. And unfortunately, I think the governor's mandates exist on the fact that they picked a set that seemed likely, but it still has some random factors, as we've discussed. There are some, it's not equitable. And it also depends on the few people who, not the few, but those who follow the mandates, whether it's a business owner or people doing so. Even though knowing that there's another set of population that doesn't follow those mandates, those risk, the whole risk matrix is based off a certain percentage of the population just following and doing that. That's great, but in a pause, it was acceptable, but like I said, if we're going forward, and we're looking to be years now, because we're coming up on year, and it's going to go beyond, we maybe we're being years. It needs to be more equitable. Everybody needs to be able to play by the same rules. And we can't pick and choose a winner and a loser. So that, that's a couple of points that I wanted to make. And I think Carl and also Kathleen, you both mentioned technology and other innovations. The risk matrix does not account for any sort of innovation, right? We've seen a lot of innovation in restaurants already in terms of being able to serve customers. There are a lot of, there's some industries like, like the health clubs that are not allowed that same privilege of innovating right now. And so I think that is something that the governors needs to explore and open up, because if we're going to be in this for years, and we're going to survive economically and everything else, then everyone's going to have to innovate and change. And then lastly, the family thing, the number of households getting together, the number of people in a household. This is a serious mental health problem. I mean, we're, we're a community of people. We have to be around each other. We need to figure out, once again, how to do that safely, but we need to be allowed to do that, so that we're not breaking the rules and doing things, so. That's, I, I think I'm encouraged by the, by the tone. Thank you, Mayor, for your opening remarks. I think there's a lot of things we can get together on, and I'd love to see a statement put together, and I'd love to see you, Mayor, empowered to go out and solicit other counties and, and cities and legislative support, so that we can get a united voice going to the mayor, or going to the governor. Because that's, that's really what it's going to take. It's going to take a bunch of us making a little bit of political noise to, to see some, some changes. Thanks.
Thank you, Dawn, and not a lot I can disagree with there. I think there's a lot of points of agreement, and appreciate your, your confidence in me to advocate for anything we come together on. Rip, saw your hand up.
Yeah, so I'm going to go out online here. I wrote some notes, so bear with me as I, as I get through this. I want to say that this is, you know, this, this last week, I spent some time looking into this and, and kind of trying to dive into a little more both open source, and then just also reading, reading the letters and everything that came in from the citizens and the voicemails from even the ones that came from across the country, just at least listening to the feedback. It's a super complicated issue that seems to be clouded by so many different matters and opinions and, and challenges, and I don't think any one answer that we can come up with tonight is, is going to be the need all, the be all or necessarily satisfy every person out there. But after reading all those letters, and, you know, I, I kind of came up with some general things that the citizens were asking of us, and what I took out of that is they're looking for leadership, protecting our citizens, and that's, and that's both the businesses and the public. They're looking for equality from of restrictions. I'll go into that here in a few minutes. Maintaining the rule of law, and then the constitutionality of the governor's orders. And they're, they're asking us to, to address those issues. So before I begin to talk a whole lot about this, I think it's important to talk about leadership a little bit. I think it's key to remember that leadership isn't a right, it's a privilege, and it's quite honestly, it's a responsibility. In fact, those that are in leadership positions, I personally feel have more responsibility and more, they are more accountable than the line workers or the, or the people that haven't taken those positions. This goes for everything from a first line supervisor at, at any organization to the President of the United States. When you assume that role, you assume more responsibility for your actions and statements. And you should be doing what, what you can to influence the, the people by providing purpose, direction, motivation to accomplish the mission and improve the organization. And that's just always been something, that was something that was ingrained to me in the military. That's the army's definition of leadership there, the ability to, to do that by providing purpose, direction, and motivation. I would ask our leaders, I would ask our leaders providing this for us. And quite honestly, I'm highly troubled that our governor seems to ignored multiple requests from local elected leadership to provide data showing a logic behind her restrictions, thus providing the purpose and motivation. I'm not a doctor or an expert on communicable diseases, but I have to agree with some of the open arguments that I've seen out there. I have seen the, the large stores that are packed, as you've discussed, Mayor. I've driven by Chipotle and seen people standing shoulder to shoulder. And I've driven by the restaurants that are in a, like a wall hunting tent or a, or a plastic tent, but sharing the air, and anyone that stayed in those know you, you share the same air. When you go camping and you're out in elk camp and someone's sick, everyone's getting sick in that tent because you're sharing the air. And so it just doesn't seem to pass the smell test on my lay opinion. And I also know that gyms have made huge financial investments to increase the sanitization of both the surfaces and the air, yet they're still closed as well. I can continue with many of the improprieties that are out there that seem to be occurring. But I, I don't believe the question is, do these restrictions work to prevent the spread of COVID? As Dawn stated, they probably do. The fact of the matter is, if you can restrict human beings from being in contact with each other, you're probably going to reduce the spread. But thus for years, that's why we've, for years, encouraged people to stay home from work or, or from out in the public when they're sick. It's not really a new thing. So I guess simply for me, this is, this isn't really about, do these restrictions work? It's, are they equitable? And that I'm, I'm super challenged with, and that is, that is something I do take extreme notice with. The, the problem is, we could shut, if we could shut down everything for a period of time, then we, we can probably solve this. But it's, that's just not feasible. It's not practical in today's society, and the cure can't be worse than the disease. In some degree, that's what these restrictions are doing. So as I read and listened to the comments and thought about this, it seems to be a bigger question. Again, they aren't equitable. And I, I would like to really encourage our leadership above us to provide that purpose and that motivation, And I, I would like to really encourage our leadership above us to provide the, that purpose and that motivation, showing us why we are doing what we are doing. Why have we chosen these items to, to restrict? Cause quite honestly, if it works, I think I can get behind it. If there's something out there that shows it works. If it's a random, um, choice, I'm not, I can't, I struggle with that. And if it's whoever has the biggest, political action down in Salem, I, I really struggle with that. The fact of the matter is we should be provided this so that we can provide better leadership, our citizens, and the counties can as well. It should really come from the state. For an order, for a leader to be successful, they have to pass that down to their subordinate. So ultimately, if your cities and counties are successful, you're successful as a governor. And I, I truly believe that's, that's kind of not happening here. And we should be asking for more of that so that we can provide what they're looking for. Also though, I do have to say that we need to also look within our own city and our own things that we're doing. You know, one thing that I did when I was reading this in, in December, I noted that we, we also went through due to COVID. And we're, we're cutting back on our, on our community, our, our seniors, um, services. And I, I struggle with that because this is the population that is the most affected by COVID. This is the most that has the, them and the immune compromised people are, are the most high fatality rates. And that, and I think you can find that pretty easy. So here we are cutting back on a resource that maybe might be, uh, able to assist people that are, have that fear that we've discussed. And getting the resources they need to stay home and, and protect themselves. And, and we aren't really doing what we need to do. I think we need to do a better job of that. I, uh, I, I think it's important that we make sure that whatever we do, that we continue to provide that, um, to minimize their exposure and obtain the physical and mental necessities and care that they need as well. And lastly, the, the maintaining the rule of law and constitution just seem to be pounded in a lot of the letters. Those do go hand in hand. I'm a, I'll be the first one to admit, I'm, I'm a huge rule follower. But our constitution was divided into three branches. You have the executive, the legislative and the judicial branch. The judicial branch is charged with, um, judicial review. Um, I'm sure our attorney can talk more about this later on, but ultimately this did go before the Oregon Supreme Court and they, they found that it was constitutional. And so I think by us, if, if we were to sit there and encourage the open defiance of this, we're not really following our own oath that we took to support the constitution of the state of Oregon and the United States. I do want to say though, that I think it's super important that there are remedies to, in, in the constitution in ways that we can address this. There's a process in place and I think we're starting to head down that direction. Um, and I'm encouraged to see that. But I also think it's important that since we have this platform to encourage our citizens to reach out to their elected officials at higher levels and encourage them to be reaching out and asking these questions that they're asking of us to, to the higher people. And Mayor, I'm, I'm glad that you're, uh, if you're willing to take on that advocacy role as Dawn stated, I, I think that's, that's fine. With that being said, I, I just, just with all of those things, I, I can't support an open defiance of the rules. But what I can support is a, a, a letter. I, I would like to ask in that letter that we be provided the tools that we need to be effective leaders as well. And I don't believe we're being provided that from the state or anywhere above us. And I think, um, you know, that was one of the things I read in that letter that you sent out from, I think it came from Malala. Show us the, show us the, the data that says that these restrictions are working. And then if they're not, let's, let's look at encouraging innovation to figure out ways that we can open up and what we need to do to, to reduce the, the spread. So, um, I, uh, yeah. Lastly, I just don't think it's, while we can ask for that, I don't think it's our job as a city council to, take, take issue with again, these matters at the state level. I think we can ask for the, the tools that we need to, to show. I think maybe together, hopefully we have a little, um, some power, but what we really need to be doing is encouraging our citizens to reach out to their elected officials and hold them accountable as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, Jeremy. Uh, Jeremy, then we'll go to you, Kathleen.
Yeah, that's a hard act to follow. Thank you, Rich. Very well put, very well, um, communicated. I, I, you know, it's, it's, it's great to start this meeting and having, um, some very thoughtful responses and, and it sounds like from those that have talked already, we're very much close on the same page, even the same verbiage of this and, and going in the, in the same direction. I can't speak because not everyone has spoken to that, but that seems where it has gone. So I do really, find comfort in that. Um, and I will keep it short because a lot of what has already been said and many of you know, I can, I can kind of go on and on. Is that, you know, I'm a law and order type of guy too, right? And we've said that many times in the past. And, um, and so when it comes to, uh, advocacy of anything that would say, no, ignore the law or to, you know, advocate to go against what has been brought down as the law or mandates of those type of things. I don't feel that that is our place or position or we have the authority to do that. Uh, we weren't given that. Now, on the other hand, we do have the ability as one voice. We have a very powerful voice in advocacy. And not only with us, but with our other brothers and sister cities, uh, we want to call that around us. And so, you know, there is a letter from Malala. One of the things that I do like about, say that letter is not necessarily everything that may be written inside that letter, but that the letter was sweet and to the point. Very small, um, in, in making a, a point. Um, when we, or anybody gets long-winded in any of their letters, it will be, it's harder to focus on. Um, and so, um, I think there's that, um, and in the communication. You know, I don't want to get behind any of the sciences for any things because as you know, if you've read anything in the news or just listened to the emails that have come in, people can find, uh, what, uh, they're considering the facts on either side of any issue, right? And that doesn't mean just COVID. That's all kinds of issues, right? And so, um, in this, um, letter, I, you know, keeping, uh, that, can be very subjective, I should say, uh, in my mind. And, uh, but on the other hand, we can also use what, the governor has already stated, you know, um, just in the last week as well, some of the issues with what we brought up with, the ones I've spoken before me, suicide rates, for instance, or the social gatherings. Um, and that is one reason why a change in who's going to be vaccinated was based off of that, uh, for opening up schools. And, and so there are these things that are correlated with, um, being able to, uh, that gems or those type of activities that have about mental healthness, health. So there's that. Just making sure. I don't want to kind of reiterate everything everyone else has said, but I feel like we're on the same page, uh, so far. And, and that's great to hear. I, my biggest thing is, you know, making sure that, we, um, are encouraging people to break the law. We don't have the authority to do that, but to support our, our families. One of the things is, is, um, you know, businesses, there's different types of business. And we know that there's the corporate America type of business. And then there's just the family business as well. And, uh, there's a big difference, I think, in that I've learned over the years. And, um, there's a lot of the family business that is the family members living next door to each one of us as well. The employees, the same people around us. So as other people have said, um, keeping those metrics fair, um, as well. And, um, it's not necessarily saying we are pro-business or against business. We're about our community and, and what that is. And that also goes to those people that, um, have opposing views too. And so I think the, the grace that we can show in our statement as well, recognizing all of those and that grace will go a long ways because, uh, we all need a little more of that and to give a lot more of that. So, oh, maybe chat a little later, but that's what I have for now.
Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate it. Uh, Kathleen, your next up.
Hi there. Um, thank you for all the comments that I've listened to. They were very well stated. And, um, as I said in the email that I sent out after Carl sent his statement out, I totally agree with all the points, the six points that you made, and they were very well put, Carl. I did add one, you know, one point there, just to kind of put Sandy into the perspective of the fact that we've got 30,000 people coming through town every day. In fact, we heard some, from some of those people that wrote us letters. And so we're not kind of a John Day situation, um, or even really a Malala situation so much in that we have so much, traffic and, and people coming through our town and some of them stopping to shop or buy gas or whatever. So, um, what I've done is I typed, tried to reach out. I talked, reached out to the county commissioners. I reached out to the, um, some of the, um, restaurant businesses and the, uh, one of the health club owners and, and just tried to kind of hear what their thoughts were and ideas. And, um, it was very helpful to kind of, um, put things in perspective. And what it, what it helps me to do is just realize so much, how much common ground we have and how much common goals and, I'm really strategies of, of, of how we do that. And, you know, we're, these businesses have been adversely affected economically. And it's, you know, it is a, a big, a huge concern. And one of the things that, you know, probably the biggest thing we can do to help these businesses is get them some financial relief. You know, that's the quickest, shortest, um, you know, getting the businesses open, you know, may take, may or may not happen with, with, with the governor and depending on how she takes this, but getting them financial relief and help is probably the, the quickest way to help because they, you know, the ones that I talked to were not willing to defy orders and risk their liquor license or their lottery dollars or things like that. And so that really wasn't a viable option for them. And so, um, I heard that kind of loud and clear. The option of getting them economic assistance at the county, I guess there was a large allocation of money that went out from the county to certain, I believe it was chambers of commerce. And I, I'm kind of waiting for the actual list of the allocations and the amounts and all. But, you know, I, I guess apparently I don't believe Sandy was on the list of, of the receiving end of that. And I also asked the county, you know, why aren't you all out there kind of advocating for, you know, fewer restrictions or reopening things? And, you know, there wasn't a real good answer to that. And, and that's unfortunate. I think that, you know, those people have a much larger platform, uh, than we do. And I'm concerned about why they're not using that platform, if there's some reason. And I haven't gotten a straight answer. I'll be honest with you. You know, I can, I can kind of assume some things, but I don't, you know, I can't say that that's, those are facts. So I won't even, uh, you know, presume those things. But as I said in my, um, earlier statement, the, the best thing we can do is get economic help. And the concern that I have with, you know, I think we're all agreed about, you know, not defying orders, which is good. And I think how we make a statement, and I'm supportive of making, you know, sending a letter to the governor, um, asking for, you know, relief and, and all, but when we're asking for things, common, you know, common courtesy, when we're asking for money, especially or just when you ask for anything, whether it be business, family or whatever, is that we, we do it in a respectful manner. And I think it's just been, you know, with, with the science changing over quickly, you know, the learning curve on this pandemic is huge. And I think that mistakes have been made, mistakes will be made. I think you can't know everything. And so you try to make the best decisions with the facts and the science and the data that you have. I did try to look into kind of, kind of the clarity. And again, like some of you said, the science, you know, people interpret the facts much differently. But what I saw that they were using for treating restaurants differently than Fred Myers or whatever, was the, the idea that people are taking their masks off at a restaurant. And, and that can increase, you know, as we know, the masks are pretty important to reduce spread. And so that was one of their rationale. With the health club, again, as I said in my letter, using, you know, recommending that, you know, if health clubs have masks and social distancing and other sanitary procedures and air vents and that kind of thing, and reduce, reduce capacity, then, you know, perhaps they should be treated like, you know, other, other places. I don't have any problem with that. I think, you know, but I think again, for me, it's, we have, I think we can all agree on some of the things we're asking for, but I guess for me, what was really important is that we don't do it in a way that implies that they're, um, trying to devastate our businesses on purpose. They're trying to get through a pandemic. They have scientists, scientists and doctors and stuff from OHSU and Oregon Health Authority. They have so much, you know, scientific expertise and I'm not, you know, we don't. And I'm not going to, um, question some of the, 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 the recommendations that they're hearing from those folks. I don't, I'm, I'm not going to question them. I'm not going to assume they're all the right answer too, because I think they're using the best available science they have, which is not perfect. And, and so I'm not going to say that what their recommendations are, are perfect. I don't believe they are. I don't, that's not the, the threshold that I'm looking for. I'm looking for, how can we make sure to get our businesses as much help as we can? And I think doing that in a respectful manner that, you know, kind of again, comes, come, you know, they're, they're as concerned about our businesses as we are. And they're not intentionally doing this to mess about with our businesses or to make them fail or anything else. They want them open as soon as possible, as do we. And coming from, coming from a statement where we have that common objective and respectfully asking that they take all possible, you know, actions to reopen as soon as possible safely is kind of what I'm, you know, definitely supportive of doing. I think that that's our common ground right there. The other part of this is that, um, I think what I heard you say is the, we can all get on the same page with the common ground was that we all, um, support, you know, the law and order. I think that as leaders, what I heard, what I thought I heard, and maybe if I heard it wrong, please point it out to me that, we can all say that we're going to follow the law, that our position is to follow the law, but we, we stop short of encouraging businesses to do so, or residents to do so and stuff. And that's where, I guess I'm, I'm not totally in agreement with that because I believe as leaders, sorry about that. As leaders, uh, I have a good watchdog. Um, as leaders, our, our role is in the community to, you know, advocate law and order, support, support our police, support the rules, support following the rules, you know, rules don't work if, you know, if everybody, you know, if, if some people violate them, it don't, it doesn't work really well. And if, I think it's not a bridge too far to say that we would encourage everybody to follow the rules and encourage everybody to contact their county commissioners and their state representatives and our governor's office to, you know, ins- insist that, they, you know, do as much as possible or more than they're doing or whatever. I think that's where we have common ground, I think. Again, I, I don't know that we have the common ground with encouraging businesses to, uh, follow the rules. I, you know, I believe that we have that responsibility, but even more so, I, we have the responsibility to see what, how we can help them so that they don't, they aren't, you know, put in that impossible position. Because I don't believe, I personally don't believe risking your liquor license and lottery funds and all that is, you know, that seems to be, you know, more risky than, uh, to your business than, than doing otherwise. So again, I, I pay, put my comments on the, um, great letter that Carl wrote. I feel like we've got a huge amount of opportunities to get funds. And again, both short-term and long-term funds from the governor's office in the state. Um, I just want to make sure we do it in a, in a respectful manner that doesn't kind of bite the hand that feeds us because we're about to ask them for millions of dollars in sewer help. And I think we, we just need to kind of promote positive relationships. We don't need to agree on all. We, and I don't agree with a lot of what they're doing, but I, but we need to be respectful when we recommend, or suggest that they, you know, consider other things. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Lori, you're up next.
Thanks, uh, Mayor. Uh, you know, Kathleen, I, I, I like where you're going with that. I, uh, I, I, I do question why the county commissioners, why I, I, I do question why the county commissioners, why our, why our state government is not doing more, why they're not more vocal. I've questioned why our legislature is not more vocal in this entire process, because all we really hear are crickets. As far as the science goes, the science currently can't agree with the science. And many of you guys have talked about it in, in the things that you've said. The science is changing every day. So it's hard to rely on science when they can't agree with each other as far as what's, as far as what is going on. I do want to caution a little bit with our terminology. When we talk about laws, you know, I think we can, we, we all agree, obviously, right? That we need to follow the laws. What we're talking about are mandates. The laws are made by the legislature. There have been no laws passed about COVID in the state of Oregon. To my knowledge, there have been no laws passed nationally about COVID. And so, you know, we're not talking about breaking laws. We are talking about questioning mandates. And Richard, I really appreciated where you came from with that and, and respect your, you know, your law enforcement, the side that you, the side that you come out with that. I agree with almost everything that everybody in this panel tonight has had to say. I do think it's important for leaders to step up and be front and center. I think it's important that we lead this community in a way that, that we can be successful. In saying that though, I want you guys to know, in, in, in my, where I'm coming from, just so that, and I'm very black and white on this, there is no world in which I will make any statement that does not allow a business owner the ability to open their business if they so choose. If they want to risk their liquor license, if they want to risk their lottery dollars, that is up to them, it is their God given right as an American citizen. And thank God for that. We've all been under that. I'm thankful that our forefathers had the ability, the fore, the forethought to not necessarily be rule followers. Because if they had been, we'd all be speaking with an accent and under the crown. So there comes a point, and I'm not, I'm not saying that, that I'm advocating, you know, people going against the rules, that's not what I'm saying. But I am supportive if they choose to do so, because again, I do believe that that is their right. For patrons that don't want to participate or go to those, those businesses, that is their right. And so I'm okay with, with making statements, but it's got to be very vanilla for me when it comes to the businesses, if you want any support from me.
Thank you, Lori. I'm, I'm, you know, just to reiterate, I'm pretty much where Lori is. There's 98% of what I've heard here today that I think we can all get on board with. But I know I'm, I'm with Lori as far as that last piece as well. I guess, you know, we've, we've spent kind of 53 minutes so far talking about this and all of us kind of giving our opening statements on where we are, which is incredibly helpful. I think it helps the dialogue. Let me ask this, are there just generally broad themes that we think we can all jump behind right away to direct staff on a letter? Is there, or short of that, if we want to try to get some accomplished tonight, we could maybe play off of, like I heard a reference to the Malala letter, I don't know, and expand upon or shorten or edit that? I'm up for either, you know, direction on that. It doesn't have to be the Malala letter either. If there's one from Kuzbe or something you like better, that, that's fine too. I, I saw a hand up from Don, and then I'll go to Jeremy.
A quick answer, I wish we could go forward tonight, but I think we need to send staff, write a letter and get a chance to revise it so that we can check every comma and so forth.
Okay, and, and Jeremy, I'll let you go too and see if you're kind of behind that. And then what I would look to direct conversation after you're done, Jeremy, with is, are there broad points, if we want to start with the staff report and then add or subtract or edit that? Or, or maybe it's Carl's six points, I'm, I'm up for whatever. I just, I want to kind of get some directional movement as well. Jeremy, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that's great, and I agree with Don. But it won't happen tonight, and we need to move forward with some of that. I appreciate some of the things that have already been written. So like from Malala, not to say that's what you use or even the same format, except for maybe keeping it short and sweet. One of the things I was going to say was what you were leading into was which, some of the points wanted to put in there, and I don't know if I put that in my first comments earlier, but was, would love to also put in there, show what we have done in our community, that we're not just asking for the, for the state to help out and do, and change some of these policies, but what we've been given, we have been able to also change our policies with inside our community to help out as well when it comes to the things that we've done with our urban renewal money and changing some of our structures around businesses and outside seating areas, how that gets put in there to help push the point that we are doing everything we can possibly do in the finances, the little finances we have and ask for the help with that as well. As one of the points in there that I don't know if has come out directly or not, but that would be one of them. And I, you know, I, I think there are several points in there that we've all said we have agreed on. And I know, well, I think that light's flashing for Lori. So, you know, yeah, we've had the law and order type of thing, but you know, that is, for me, not to suggest that we go out and tell someone that, you know, explicitly it's okay to disobey the, that, that was not our comment from our council or, or that. Now, not necessarily the opinion of, you know, that's not under our authority either. So, but anyways, I'll devote, let it go to who.
So what I, so I'm looking at the staff report here. I see this COVID-19 restrictions are particularly burdensome on local small businesses. I've heard that tonight. The city respects and is obligated to comply with all laws and executive orders that are legally binding on the city, including the COVID-19 requirements. I've heard that tonight, that's good. The governor should amend the restrictions in extreme risk counties to allow prohibited businesses eating, drinking establishments, indoor recreation, and businesses to remain open, or, or to open. I've heard that tonight. Kathleen, yeah, hand up.
Yeah, that's the one that I guess I, I'm having a little bit of a problem with because, again, you know, masks are required in other businesses. And just to give you an example, and I guess today there was a big of a kerfuffle there at the ant farm about some sovereign citizens not wanting to wear masks going into ant farm. And they had to really struggle with how to deal with that. And so because, you know, they're, you know, because you cannot require masks to, you know, they're not the same situation. And so I'm just, I have a little bit of a disagreement about the fact that they can't be treated exactly the same. So that, that's the one point, that if we could word it in a different way, I think, you know, maybe that would help somehow. You know, but, but we, I, I believe we need to acknowledge that, you know, saying that implies that you're going to be wearing a mask while you're eating, and that's not what I've seen or, or is the case or possible. So how, how do we word that in a way that acknowledges that fact and also encourages as much flexibility as we want?
Don, I saw you, and you have a suggestion on an edit?
I would just say, let's modify it to say in a safe, you know, manner as opposed to in the same manner. And I, I like the word innovative, because it will come up with a way.
I see you wanted to go, Carl, but it looks like Rich, we're kind of on this one topic here of edit. So let's explore that first. Rich, go ahead.
I think Carl wanted to have some, I, I don't know if I was first or last or.
Well, well, is it pertaining to an edit of this line, Rich?
Yeah, kind of. I mean, well, I understand, I think we're kind of going down. So some people going into ant farm or Safeway or anywhere else that's refusing to wear a mask is, to me, Kathleen, that's a little bit different. That's, that's a, that's that choice that they're making to defy a rule. I think even under the current, are not extreme, but high risk, you're still required to wear it into, until you sit down at the booth, and then I think you can remove it. And if anybody knows better, it's been a while since I've eaten out at a restaurant, but that's what we did last time we ate out. The, the hangup I have though is the fact that I'm, I'm really, to be frank, I'm really hung up that you can go eat in a wall tent or a piece of plastic room outside, even in the extreme risk, but you can't do that right now inside with air cleaners running and sanitize, sanitization. And I'll be on, to me, anecdotally, I'm not, I have not busted out a tape measure, but it seems like some of them look like they're packed in closer in the tents than they are when you go sit in the restaurant. And so I, I gotta be frank, like I, I really struggle. Like, I don't mind actually asking for the opening, but I would like to put a little bit of basis somehow justifying why we feel that way. And, and that the current restrictions do not seem equitable across the board. And that, and that's where I'm at with that.
I'd be, let me finish just these points really quick on here, and then I'm going to you, Carl. The final one, and Don, I was, I'm totally open for that edit that you had. Of course, I don't know how Kathleen feels on it. The final point here says the state should leverage all possible options to provide additional support and relief to local small businesses. I heard that tonight as well. The, the one thing I would add, and then I'm going to you, Carl, that I heard tonight that's not on this list was Don's point of the mental health ramifications and isolation and all of that. And so maybe an additional bullet point that talks about, you know, the, the other ramifications to, to the shutdown order as far as mental, not to health goes. Carl, go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna put my egos hide a little bit here because I wanted to say, a comment on all those things, but for me, and go quickly, I agree with those edits. I think we can say we want to see the governor's office do something more equitable with our businesses without saying that we require the businesses to open or we require the businesses to stay closed. I think that's, I'm a common Lori's base in terms of that. That is something, if somebody wants to disobey the rules and take the consequences, that's their job, that's their decision. But we should be an advocate for trying to make our businesses as healthy as possible and be able to survive this. Because I think we, like Don, some other folks have said, this is not going to be a quick solution. And then finally, we do need to talk about the other part of our society, the people, not just our businesses that are going through mental health issues. I made some suggestions on the bottom half of my paper that, well, I think we should be doing some other things that make community. We got, I don't know how much money, I think, I want to say $20,000 worth of fireworks. Why the heck can't we fire those puppies off at a celebration for something in the future to create some energy and some excitement for our people? And there must be some other things that we can do that are in the same kind of category as our open eating facilities with the shelters for our businesses and apply that to our citizens and give them some, some hope, some kind of incentive to carry on. You know, the suicide rate just scares me to death. And I think that we should be putting on another item that says we need to be looking at, looking to our people to help them get through this as well on our letter. With that, I'll be quiet.
Okay, so I, we went through some of those broad strokes themes. We added, you know, the mental health and all that, some of Carl's points. Are we missing anything? Because what I'm looking to do here is to provide staff direction to get kind of a foundational letter going that then they can get out for individual feedback. And I would just remind council, individual feedback back to staff, because we can't have public meetings going on, you know, through group, group email. So when, we'll have, you know, Jeff or and or Jordan write something up, send it to us as a group. Please respond back individually with any edits. And then they'll come back out with maybe, you know, another letter or something for us to all see, you know, that, that has our collective thoughts in it or not. And then we'll have that proposed at our next council meeting. So with that, that's kind of the process I'm laying out. Let me know if anyone objects to that process and then if we've missed any of the general themes that we would like staff to tackle. Okay, Jeremy, go ahead. I see, I saw a question from Jeremy.
Yeah, just as making sure the theme there, are we okay with, you know, when that letter's written, not only are we leveraging all possibility of support, but do we go into this letter or this statement also explaining how we have gone and done what we have done to help out our businesses?
Yes, I apologize. Yes, that should be a point in there. Yeah, so, and to, to that, I'm guessing you're talking about like the urban, the uses of the urban renewal fund, and the outdoor structures, as well as our divvying up of the COVID relief funds?
Yeah, well, and even before we got the COVID relief, we did our urban renewal for small businesses. It's not much money, but we're a small community. And I think that needs to be stated too, that we're a small community doing as much as we can and that with these, we need help as well from the state as these are mandates coming down from them, not us, that it can help those small businesses getting through this as well. But I think there's a statement in there, explain what we've done. It's not like we're just asking for the handout. We've been handing out as well, but we just don't, we don't print money. And I know the state doesn't either, that's the feds, they print money. But the, the same point goes there, so.
And I would expand on that, Jeremy, and even see some of our Sandy net hotspots would qualify as well as additional things we're doing to try to address the COVID, COVID response.
Yeah, because there's the unemployment and there's everything else too. So I think there's a story in our statement. And then as it was mentioned by Don and several others, that this, we're better in power. So if we can take this with other communities like Malala or others, but also from a chamber side of things too, you know, what kind of, how we have a statement with them, we have a better chance of getting the ear of those in Salem that we need to have the ear of, so.
Okay, so are we good with, okay, Kathleen?
Yeah. And we just said that, you know, we, we seem to be, you know, sending this to the governor, and that's important, but as I said in my earlier statement, the county is also handing out funds. And, and, you know, as you all pointed out, you know, everybody's kind of been crickets regarding those folks. So I would say, you know, sending whatever it is that we do finally arrive on to the county commissioners to ensure that we're asked, you know, we'd like to be considered for the, the special funding pots that come up. They seem to come up pretty quickly and you have to kind of know about them. So sending this letter to the county commissioners and Senator Chuck Thompson and Representative Anna Williams, I think are really important to make sure that we're in loop. And like I said, we're also, you know, respectfully asking them to help us out. Thank you.
Definitely not opposed to that at all. And to get engaged, get engaged in this process, the earlier points. Jordan, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, just say a suggestion, Mayor, on maybe the process that can help with staff drafting those letters. Maybe there's a city counselor that could maybe be a sponsor, just work with staff on drafting that letter and maybe can see, you know, the initial drafts and things like that and work with us on it. And then we can circulate that to the rest of the council. Just given the political nature and, you know, the amount of involvement from each of the counselors, it might be, you know, something to consider if there's someone on council that would like to, you know, help with that and maybe sponsor that.
Okay.
Maybe two, or maybe two people as well.
Lori, Don and Kathleen's hands up. I'm okay with those three. I think we have a diversity of opinion on that. If those three can come along, can, can agree to get us to a letter, I think the rest of us can. Not saying that you're disagreeable, just I think you three would be a good representative body.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, all right. Okay, with that, is there any other comments before I conclude our work session and move on to our Sandy City Council meeting tonight? Yeah, Kathleen?
I want to say thank you for the opportunity to have this on the agenda. And I know it was a little surprised last meeting. It was my first meeting and I appreciate all the time and effort people have put into thinking about it, exploring, exploring things, and I think it's important. So I really want to thank you all for doing that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, Kathleen. One thing I would say to everyone too is, is I can't think of a single time that I've rejected an item on the agenda that's been proposed. And so please, if you have items that you want to have on the agenda, feel free to suggest those to me beforehand. And then also these work sessions, you know, we have these, we didn't last time. And I think we might have been able to sidestep some of the stuff last time if we would have. All these work sessions is for us to talk about the. All these work sessions is for us to talk about the upcoming meeting and what we want to discuss and what we don't. And just like tonight when we talked about changes to the agenda. That would have also been a good time for us to have kind of had that conversation as well. So thank you for bringing it up. I'm glad that we had this conversation tonight, Kathleen. And yeah, really appreciate it. Before I adjourn, I saw Rich had his hand up.
I think I'll just hold on to the comment I was gonna make. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, no problem. All right, with that, I will go ahead and close our work session for tonight. With that, I will now open our Sandy City Council meeting. Please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation. All right, thank you. Jeff, can you please call the roll?
Yes, councillor Pete's old.
Here.
Councillor Smallwood.
Here.
Councillor Sheldon.
Here.
Councillor Walker.
Here, sorry.
Thank you, councillor Exner.
Here.
Councillor Hockinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. Thank you for that, Jeff. Pre usual, I'll start off with a quick review of tonight's agenda. We'll be calling for any changes to the agenda. We'll then go into public comment. That will be of the opportunity at tonight's meeting for members of the public. To address the council. You have three minutes. Please remember, state your name and address at the record for that. And we will then have our consent agenda. That has our city council meetings from our last meeting as minutes, as well as our parks and trials advisory board appointment. And our new business will be doing our budget committee appointments. We'll then have our report from our city manager, Jordan Wheeler. And we'll conclude the evening after our council and committee reports. With that, is there any changes to tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will move forward to public comment. The council welcomes your comments at this time. The instructions are included on our city council agenda, but if you're participating online, please click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. You'll be provided three minutes to speak and please remember to state your name and address for the record. And with that, Jeff, do we have any public comment tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll just take a list, take a look at the list of attendees for any hands. Just give it a second. And Mayor, I do not see any raised hands tonight.
All right. Well, thank you, Jeff. With that, we'll move forward with the consent agenda. Unless there's a discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we pass the accepted consent agenda as it stands.
Thank you, councillor.
I second it.
All right, I have a a motion that we adopt our consent agenda from councillor Exner, a second from councillor Walker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Oppose, nay, or a thumbs down. Motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have our budget, our budget committee appointments. I'm Jordan.
Oh, good evening, Mayor. Yeah, and I'll let Tyler do the staff report. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit. On the council's discussion during the the work session. Really, the reason we put this on the agenda and not under consent, but under new business. The budget committee has a few different rules around it and one of them is. The sort of the the rule about. Appointing budget committee members that have applied that meet all the requirements, meaning, you know, they're. You know, they're they're citizens that live within the city of Sandy and they're registered voters. And this came up before, I think, a couple of years ago when we had the openings. But this is, this is a different process than what we typically do with advisory boards with an interview process for interviewing each applicant and. Then forwarding those applicants to the full council. So, you know, we gave us the opportunity to talk about that process a little bit with the the council. And again, there's sort of different rules around the budget committee and we felt like maybe we can pull that out just so we can have a little bit of a discussion about that. Kind of the rules around the budget committee, answer any questions about the process while we have the chance. And then proceed from there. So that's my brief intro explanation on on why it's not on the consent. But I'll let Tyler get into more of the details on on who is before you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan. So I will be fairly brief as well. As Jordan indicated, there are some different rules around. The budget committee appointment process. As I mentioned earlier during the work session. We need to have seven members on the budget committee equal to the the seven members on council. Essentially, local budget law says that if you have, you know, seven qualified applicants, then you need to appoint all seven. There's an interview process that's required. And so we had one existing member, Fritz Van Gent, who facilitated or helped us during the last budget process in 2019. And then six open positions. We received exactly six applicants, which made this process rather easy on my end and easy on your end as well with not having to conduct interviews. And those six applicants are Dan Phipps, Jan Lee, Linda Malone, Vina Carpenter, Noah Myram. And Timothy Huber. You may recognize some of those names as either past councillors, past mayor, past. Individuals who ran for a council position. So there's quite some, a wide range of expertise. Knowledge on how the city process, you know, processes work and that sort of thing. And so I think overall it is going to be a really good budget committee this go around. You know. In the absence of multiple applicants, we don't really need to go through the interview process and it makes this part pretty straightforward. But if you have any questions on, you know, the process itself, the applicants or what's next, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, I would recommend that we appoint the six applicants that we received and move forward with the budget process.
Yeah, I see Kathleen, couple of quick questions and then I'll go to Kathleen. One is, is. Is there a timeline that we have to have these appointments made by?
My understanding is that it's a reasonable, you know, effort made to get applicants and a reasonable timeline. So. You know, we're kind of nearing the end of January. We plan on having a budget 101 meeting with the budget committee members. Relatively soon and then we're gonna hop into budget mode with, you know, budget hearings and and that sort of thing in April. And so. There's not a hard and fast deadline date that we need to have these appointed by, but from a, you know, calendar perspective on on how we. Do our internal workings and and what needs to happen next. This seemed to be the appropriate meeting.
And then how did we advertise these rules?
They were advertised in the Sandy Source Newsletter. They were advertised on the city website and there was a Facebook posting as well, I believe.
Thank you. I'll go to Kathleen. My only comment on it is, is I first thank you to everyone who applied. I think it's outstanding when people want to do public service. My my only thing is, is, and you mentioned it, we have some people who are pretty active in this community that's on that list. Many of which I consider personal friends of mine. But I I know a couple of the people on the list are applying for a planning commission meeting, a position as well. And I just think we've got a, and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm looking like I'm gonna vote for all these people to serve on our budget committee. Just a reminder that we got to continue to try to get new blood and involvement from different people in our community involved in these different committees. Because we don't want to have, you know, just group think and the same, you know, voices and people on every single committee and commission that we have. And so we just say, I want to be a little bit of aware of that is to try to continue to kind of get a wide net of of people getting involved in our community. Kathleen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Stan. I don't get to say this very often, but I think we're on the same page. You asked the same question. I was gonna ask about how the, how it was advertised. And then the second point I was just gonna make was on the city notes. You have Timothy Humber and I believe you said his name is Huber. And so that's just a typo that you might want to correct for the record. Thank you.
All right. So with that, I'll, unless there's more discussion or question, we can entertain a motion to adopt these members onto our budget committee.
I make a motion that we adopt these committee members onto the committee.
I second that. And I have a motion from councillor Pete's old to accept our budget committee appointment members. And and a second from councillor Sheldon. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Most a nay or a thumbs down. Motion carries. Congratulations to all our new budget committee members and thank you for your service to our community. At word to our report on our city man, from our city manager, Jordan.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, first, a bit of good news, our new website launched last week and I just wanted to thank. It was Jeff as the project lead on that is one of, you know, the key items in our communications plan. And he did a great job of taking that project and and getting our new website up and running. It looks great, works great. I should also, you know, mention, you know, folks like Tyler and Greg and a whole lot of staff and a lot of departments really helped bring the content over and make sure it's. It's functioning and really launched without a hitch. So we're really happy to kind of bring the website into, you know, the 21st century here. And it kind of leads into my next item that, you know, really can expand into a long conversation with council. But it might be a conversation to have, you know, at goal setting. And that's about sort of this public comment process and in the council receiving public comment. I think, you know, the conversation tonight and over the last couple of weeks. Around COVID really generally generated a lot of, you know, phone calls and emails to council. And we kind of had this sort of process of, you know, councillors forwarding the emails to us and and then putting them in a shared drive. So everybody can see that. Ideally, those would go straight to council. And with the new website, we have a web form now where that can happen, where it just goes straight to the city council instead of staff. Kind of playing the the middleman role, so to speak. But the other option is, you know, really advertising council, citizens use the council input or city council. Distribution list so that all councillors are copied on, you know, emails and input that are meant to be. Shared with the city council and then we can have a couple of staff members copied on that just, you know, and so we can keep it for the record and and stay in the loop. But we're happy to hear other ideas, you know, there's other models out there, but I think, you know, a council distribution email list, really using that. You know, externally and internally, it's helpful. And then I think the new website should help drive more of that public input. You know, it's directly to the city council. And then, you know, related is a question about more of logistics of that information as it comes in and whether this council would like that information included. In the city council packets, the agenda packets. And maybe that's something to digest and think about for goal setting. Some cities, you know, automatically do that as part of the public comment portion of the agenda packet. They'll just, you know, put all those emails out there. There is questions about, you know, do you want to redact people's information and emails and stuff like that? Or, you know, just have, you know, that kind of explanation that that's going to be included with their comments in the in in the public record. So some food for thought, I think we have sort of a better solution that we're working out. And honestly, you know, this was a controversial, popular topic. We don't get a whole lot of these, you know, well. Knock on wood here. We've had a few over the last, over the last couple of years, but really that amount of public comment is kind of extraordinary. And we'd handle it the best we can. I'm just, you know, thinking about a better way to get that information directly to council. So just looking to start that conversation and and again, we can continue that at goal setting. Planning Commission interviews, as Mayor mentioned, we have another vacancy. I think we are looking for confirmation on the interview panel. I think last time it was councillors. He told and Lee and then the mayor. So we'll need at least one more. Or if we like, if the council would like to mix it up and have a different committee. But I think we have three applicants. Is that right? Three applicants. So I think we're looking to schedule those interviews and just need to know, you know, who might want to serve on that committee.
And I, and we've already been reached out to on the dates on those as well. So just let you know that.
So I see Laurie, so Laurie's hand up, I see Carl coming in here, I see a hand up for Kathleen. Do you have a comment, Carl?
Yes, I do. I I believe that I'm not gonna want to volunteer because I've become so many of these, I'm, I could tell you what I'm looking for without even. Dreaming about it, but I think a new councillor should be on that to get an idea what some of these planning commissioner. Positions entail. I think it should be a new person.
Okay, Kathleen, I see your hand up.
I have a question and and a comment. So is is the. Review board that you're talking about just making a recommendation to the council or who's deciding on the new member?
Yeah, that's true. What we've had happen is I was kind of alluding to that with our committee appointments with parks earlier councillor is. What we've done in the past is appoint two to three for planning. It's been three, of course, that's a bigger commission position, right? Three members of our council as well as the chair of the planning commission. Conduct interviews and then provide a recommendation to the broader council for for appointment.
I'm interested or one of the other new members possibly.
Okay, great. Anybody, I saw, all right, Laurie had her hand up earlier, but we can go with the new member, new councillor, I'm fine with that. Eddie, other, I mean Kathleen's great. Anyone want to throw their name into the hat against Kathleen on it or are we okay with Kathleen? I'm just looking at the new councillors. Okay, all right. So Kathleen then. And then so myself and Jeremy already on there with. With Mr. Crosby. So I think we should be good to proceed. We go ahead and send those dates to Kathleen, councillor Walker after this for me, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And just last thing, we do have a busy period of time coming up for you. Thank you all for responding for the dates. I think we got everything scheduled. And I know everyone was able to meet with our facilitator, Sarah Wilson. Just a reminder that we did send out new meeting invites for those virtual meetings. We'll be using the facilitators. Account so we can do breakout rooms and things like that for the 26th, 27th and the 13th. And then we're working on the logistics for the tour, but that's all scheduled, starting at the operations center as as the meetup on on the 30th. So a lot of meetings coming up. We also have the February 1st city council meeting too. So a little busy stretch of time for you guys, sorry.
Does she use Zoom or what does she use, Jordan?
She does, yeah.
You knew that was my question.
Yeah.
All right, all right.
That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. So now we're on to committee and council reports. Just reminders, my plan is is that our third goal setting is to announce our committee assignments. I'm just hoping through that goal setting process, we can kind of get a feel for everybody's expertise, but more importantly than that, their passion. And so where they want to serve as a liaison to our council. So with that, committee and councillor reports, we'll start with you councillor Sheldon.
I have nothing to offer at this time.
All right. Thank you councillor. Councillor Exner.
Okay, one two punch here. I'll start off with a little bit on the downside. I'm deciding to use my four by four to go across a couple of different intersections. One is, I think we're gonna have the ownership of it sometime soon. So Jordan, if if we can start looking at that intersection between Pioneer and Mining. I think I need a four wheel drive to get through there at times. There's some real bumps. And same thing for the road on junction of. Highway 26 and Wolf going down into the post office. Some of that may be the ODOT's responsibility, but as you get down over the bumper too, there are some ugly things in there that. I have brought up that particular intersection a couple of the times and I don't see much going on. And we've done some paving corrections and some other places. I think it's. Appropriate that we start looking at how we make some of these asphalt things a little bit better. Okay, so enough of that. No, January 9 was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day and I missed the boat and. Not bringing that up at the last council meeting, but I wanted to say. I think we should say appreciation to our law enforcement folks. They do a lot of work for us. They put a lot of effort into being as. Correct as possible and they get into the middle of things that some of us would probably not want to be involved in. And I appreciate what they do. I thank you for their service and we want to just let them know that I fully support them and. I hope that the rest of council feels the same. I'm sure then many other have said that in the past. So with that, I let that one go. And then lastly, you're going to see me advocate for this. I we talked a bunch about how not just our businesses in our workshop need to be supported, but I think also our citizens. Last fall, we decided to take a little bit of a risk and put the movies back on our our list of things that we are providing for our citizens. And we had troubles keeping people away. It was so beneficial for people to feel good about getting out spaced, safe, being able to do that. I think because of the, I know that we're going to have troubles with getting all the approvals and planning and supporters and all the rest. I propose that we look strong and hard at putting the movies and the music back on our list of things that we do this next summer and that we provide all the safe ways of doing it. But I think that's something that really our folks really appreciate. I got to tell you, I love sitting in Mining Park on my lawn chair yelling and saying hi and in the old days, high fiving friends and neighbors. And I think it's a real important thing to support the mental health of our citizens as much as we support our businesses. And then finally, we bought those fireworks. Mayor, I think we need to pop those bobbies puppies off this summer, find an excuse, find a way. I'm not as sure that we can do that with the fireworks, but I sure am in favor of the music and the movies in our mining park. I think that's really important for our folks. So with that, I'm going to call it quits for the night.
All right, well, well, Counselor, we all know I love fireworks, so I'm 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 right there with you. Counselor Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. I had some questions that I was asking about the gazebo program and I'm really excited about the program. I did talk to a couple of folks about it, this several folks about it this week, asking if they, you know, were aware of it, did they apply and all that? So I think there's a lot of interest in it and I'm excited to see it be successful. I am interested, I guess there there's a review board or something and I am interested in helping be on that. The questions that I'm kind of asking Jordan about have to do with some of the process on there. I want to make sure that, first of all, everybody's hearing about it. Second of all, and where I'm going with this is this is something we may want to kind of bring back to the city council just for a little fine tuning. One of the concerns that came up for me was that these grants are for basically up to $100,000, which is a chunk of change. When, you know, when we consider that the, you know, we, you know, the pool was $360,000 and yet we're looking at giving out. And I get it, it's a different pot of money, it's a different thing and I get all that, but still, it's a lot of money. It's it's a hundred, you know, up to $100,000 per business and we're basically taking city money and building private infrastructure for private businesses. And I know what we're doing it and I support why we're doing it. But I also want to make sure that we're very fair about it, that we're successful about it. And so one of the concerns that I do have about kind of coming out of the chute is that it's a first come, first served grant. And that's not something that I'm familiar with because I've gone, you know, applied for and gotten over $7 million in grants over the last 20 years. And I can't recall any of them being first come, first get the grant. And so, you know, the by, so I just want to make sure that we are kind of ensuring this process in order to be successful and to not, you know, be picking winners or losers or or kind of not being fair about it. I want to make sure that everybody hears about it, everybody's able to apply. We have a process for evaluating the grants and giving out that much money. And it's something that everybody can kind of then understand and support and that we don't have folks coming back and saying, well, you know, they they didn't hear about it or didn't get their application in time, so they're out of the out of the running. So those are some of the concerns that I'm I'm kind of the questions I'm asking, but also I just think this could be such a great program and I want to make sure that we've set it up to be totally successful. So I'm going to kind of follow up some more on that that avenue and I'll I'll work with staff and keep you guys apprised. Thank you.
If I may add to that, my my only thing I would ask is is I agree with everything you said there. I think the process needs to be fair. You know, I didn't see, you know, somehow I missed the first come, first serve, so I totally understand that. What I would ask, so is it's like, let's let's do try to err on the side of speed and try whatever process it is, you know, that we want to make sure is right and correct, which I do stand with. We do, we do need to be expeditious though. You know, this is unprecedented times, a big reason we're trying to get these outdoor structures up is while we are under this band-aid of folks trying to get, you know, some better outdoor seating and stuff. So definitely want the right process, I hear you and thank you for liking the the program. I just, I also at the same time want to make sure that we got a little giddy up to our step to to make sure that these businesses get much needed relief. So thank you, appreciate your report. Counselor Hawkinson.
Thanks, Mayor. Hey, I got an opportunity last week to go to a Parks Board and three people retired off that Parks Board and I was kind of blown away when they added up their years of experience, 41 years of experience between the three people who left, which is nothing short of amazing. Kathleen, of course, carrying a big chunk of that 41 years. It's amazing to me when we have that kind of dedication from citizens who want to get active and involved and and make their community better. So second thing I wanted to acknowledge is the the number of emails that Jordan mentioned that we received around COVID, most of which were pretty polite and respectful, stating the various positions on one side or the other, or middle even. I think it's it's great having that involvement and I'm very pleased to see the city take a little more proactive in terms of providing a global external available externally available distribution list to make it easier for people. And also to minimize the the headaches with the the open records laws. So I think that's great. Second thing, or third, I guess, lose track of it all. I think that the process, the work that we went through earlier today was great. I really appreciate everybody's willingness to come back after an emotionally charged couple of weeks and and work together. I think that was that was wonderful. I would like to, and I don't know if it's the right time to suggest it, but to tee up a topic for later. I mean, we've still got COVID to deal with, but I would like to see us have some sort of work session where we understand better about the laws around homelessness and transience and other sort of vagrancy type laws so that we can better understand the restrictions that are there and make sure that we do everything we can within our power to set ourselves up from the proper legal foundation to keep our community safe and inviting to everybody. So anyway, if that's something we can just think about for a time slot, I know the next month or so is pretty full, but I'd like to get it up there pretty soon. Thanks.
Thank you and thank you for that report, Counselor. One thing I'll just mention now is in my report because you brought it up on work sessions. Our last council at our goal setting really kind of put forward almost a year's worth of, we did a brainstorming on what what are the topics, you know, that we as a council should have real candid conversations on about of the community? And that's what we'd utilize that work session for. I'm not sure if we're going to have time in this next goal setting or not. If we don't, I would look to almost have, this sounds horrible, but a work session on work sessions where all of us as counselors come in with ideas on the topics that we want to explore over the next year and then calendar those out and plan for those and get them on a staff calendar for preparation of stuff. And and I agree, I I think homelessness and 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 all those issues and how we confront those would be one for sure that we would run on there. So thank you for that. Counselor Smallwood.
Yeah, so my only report tonight would be talking about the send off for the Parks Board. Yeah, like, like Don said, 41 years of experience between three people who have just done a wonderful job for our parks and in our community. Sarah did a great job of of making a really nice presentation, nice little video. And I think it was a really good send off, all things considered, having to do it via Zoom, which is never ideally, I like to be able to do those types of things in person. But I am looking forward to their endeavors in the things, obviously Kathleen's on council, so we'll continue to be able to interact with her. But I think the other two will find other avenues to to participate with city functions. I'd also like to thank Mount Hood Jiu Jitsu for their cleanup on the Tickle Creek Trail. They did a fabulous job, it looks awesome. And would like to also comment on the cleanup along Highway 26 on the trail, the walking path there between industrial and Highway 26. That also looks fantastic. Can I see that we've got some no trespassing signs? We don't, but the property owners have some no trespassing signs put up there. So I would like, Donna, you're you're tugging on my heartstrings with your your homeless homeless thing because it's it's kind of becoming a major issue for myself as well. And you know, and I'd like to, Jordan, if we could look at maybe some ways or or, you know, I'm even willing to to maybe contact the county and look at some ways that maybe we can partner with them to come up with some constructive ideas to to work with this problem. Maybe a little bit better, maybe be a little more proactive, so. And that's all I got.
I agree. Thank you, Counselor. Council President Pete Old.
Yeah, thanks. So I have to get in a few of these comments, like, I was running around town for Lori's sake and for all you new counselors, you'll catch on to our inside jokes like me running around town and how old I am. But the Tickle Creek Trail was an amazing thing and not only that, there were so many people out there. And so I'm so glad back in March and and April, when we had the ability and it was in our preview to keep those that trail open during COVID for just the ability to run and get out from that. So many families and so many people, it was exciting to see people out and about getting some fresh air as we are all cooped up inside and, you know, we, was that yesterday? You know, and just on a sunny day in the middle of January. Again, I ran around towns, I ran right up the center of town and to have to run down the sidewalk there on 26 with so many people lined up for businesses, whether it's the, you know, outside, you know, Joe's Donuts to all the ski places to the carts, it was nice to see that Sandy is still a great place to stop and be able to even get the takeout and do those type of things in our local small businesses there. And so not all of them are privileged to have that that type of business where they can still thrive in those scenarios, but it was great to to see so many people stopping and spending their money in our town. That being said, during the process, I did see an accident right on 26, so thank you. If it wasn't you, Lori, your team that came out of the intersection area of Starbucks there, that that intersection there can be very dangerous. So thank you for our fire departments. I know Clackamas County showed up as well on that scene, so shout out to our firefighters and our police officers that were there. One of the things, the outdoor structures, I just excited about it. I know Kathleen, you brought that up, really excited about it, excited about the the ability for speed. And usually we want to take more caution in this, but the ability to kind of get it out when it's actually is super important right now for the ability to have some of these restaurants and other places being able to have that. I think it's a great thing for our community that we're going to be able to see for decades to come if done right. And I think it will be done right. And part of that is working with the architect the city has, it's not required, but definitely helps to speed the process up. And I've talked to several businesses that are super excited about it and are lining up. And in fact, that's one reason that I had requested the postponement of the Economic Development Board at the last meeting, which is kind of an odd one to have right at the beginning of the year with all the holidays and everything was because staff was so busy taking the applications in and that wanted to spend more focus on that than planning an update for our board. And so excited that David has taken that on and has gotten the word out and and really out there to a lot of individuals and when the ideas that I have heard from some of the businesses, what they've communicated to me, you know, what we see come through the process, who knows? But it's some pretty cool features, our their city is going to enjoy coming out of COVID. Pretty exciting, so excited about that. The traffic on Langessand slash Debarco, and I know I talked to Carl because he lives on Langessand on this. You know, sitting here, looking out my window during Christmas break and then traffic of traffic never stopping. And then the semi trucks and then just Monday was a holiday, I was able to be home and looking out the window. And in the middle of the day, semi truck after semi truck after, and then here my wife come home and complained that down at 2:11, sitting in a traffic jam to try to get down to Barco, because we know to go across, went all the way up into what is that, Jacoby? By the church there, that length just to turn left from all the cars that are going by on that. And I understand that, you know, this path can be used as a, in case there's an emergency on Highway 26, but they're really using it as a shortcut and not just cars but the semi trucks and the double length semi trucks that go pie on it as well. The road wasn't, you know, built for that type of traffic and so going through our residential neighborhoods to avoid the going into town and turning left a little bit. So I just want to bring that up, that that's a huge concern. It's a huge concern as we have lots of probably no more walkers and runners run down the length of Debarco from 360 seconds to the end and back because part of it's on that trail, but not all of it. And a lot of kids and other places too. And so there is a point where there's an emergency, you know, I don't want to use the border bypass, but to get around some of that, but not necessarily at the expense of the residents that live in this neighborhood and stuff for all of Highway 26 to be headed down.
Jeremy, if I can, I'll sneak in there and make a plug with you on this Langessand. We we did have that conversation on the phone. And I could tell when a car, heavy truck goes by my front door, there is a manhole cover that I think has about three inches of slack in it. And whenever it goes, heavy truck goes across it, I can feel that pounding inside my house. So I don't think that our Langessand and Debarco roads were designed to have heavy truck traffic. Certainly there are some possibilities of fixing some of these that maybe might help somehow, so.
But and this is going in the summer too. And I mean, I've lived here a long time and it's not, it's not been like this the entire time, but it's, people have developed. I don't know if there's a thing on Google Maps that says, hey, turn left on this side road and down here because the traffic is too thick over here. It but it's backing up down now halfway down to Barco to the other end, just trying to turn left on that, creating a different.
Jeremy, not to interrupt you, did you say that there are tractor trailers driving down to Barco?
Oh, yes, oh, yes. Yes, 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 there are, because I'm like, they're just crushing our tree limbs as they go down. And I get it from, you know, a local type of place, but not, this is not meant, that road is not meant as the bypass emergency and there's some other things that we've got farther down. But you know, whether it's some things that can detour from people doing that, speed humps, something, whatever it may be, I think it's something that we should be identifying now because, yeah, I was quite, you know, wow. And we know that the traffic is bad, you know, every Sunday night and, you know, coming home from the mountain or whatever. But when I was here for two weeks during Christmas break, watching it, I was like, this isn't, I mean, it's Christmas break, but it was, it was pretty bad. And I know that some of you live in the near neighborhood and not just directly on the path of that. And yeah, so anyways, just bringing that up for future ideas to help with keeping local traffic more local, you know, when it's not an emergency to have to go around Highway 26 closure. The last thing is Sandy Net, there, there has been coming out a lot more broadband grants right before the New Year and the word on the street from the state and others, especially with the administration change in DC and the FCC change. They're very looking at putting out there a lot of more grants and programs out there to expand COVID, not expand the broadband. Yeah, hopefully not COVID, but to help with COVID, but also just in the the sense of the broadband. And I think because of COVID, we have been just blessed in the fact that And I think because of COVID, we have been just blessed in the fact that we have been able to do what we're doing right now without a hiccup. And I sit on the State Broadband Advisory Council, and that is not the same place everywhere else, and, and sometimes we take that for a huge granted, for granted, but we have so much more around us that is not able to do that, just, you know, one house outside the city limits. And so there are a lot of grants and things coming down, and we're talking in the billions of dollars nationwide, and to be able to start planning, to be able to utilize that and take that as a resource when it comes available is something I'll be looking forward to hearing about and presenting that forward, but something that our community at large and outside in the region area around Sandy can really benefit, as we have heard, some of us on council, during this pandemic, teaching and learning from home, people just right outside the city limits are screaming bloody murder at us, and they're like, well, go talk to someone else, you know, because, but, you know, those places are some places that are needing help from just doing education to work from home. The world has changed because of COVID and how we work, how we teach, how we do business, and how we shop, whether we like that or not, a lot of that's not going to change. Some of it will change back, but the more we can do to keep the people around us connected is the better. But anyways, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Counselor. A couple items for me. One is I just want to thank all, everyone on council for the thoughtful discussion earlier on the COVID issue. I thank you to members of our community and, and outside of our community for all the public feedback over the last couple of weeks, and, and thank you to staff for compiling all of that and the work you put into kind of trying to summarize and get us kind of focused towards a certain direction where you found commonality. So really, really appreciate all the, the thoughts and conversations around that issue. I wanted to highlight with you our community. Jordan sent out an email letting us all know. I also got to hear from Senator Merkley's staff that same morning about us kind of getting through that next major hurdle in our obtaining the WIFI alone and getting invited to submit a proposal for that. Just wanted to thank just all of our council members who worked hard on advocating for that with our different congressional delegation. Wanted to thank members of our staff and our public works and our city hall for, and our consulting team for working hard on a submission for that. And then, of course, our congressional delegation and their staff, Congressman Blumenhauer and Senator Wyden, and then, you know, the biggest thanks goes to Senator Jeff Merkley, him and his team really spearheaded and helped coordinate the, and continue to coordinate really our federal delegation efforts on that. Their staff has been incredible, Senator Merkley's staff to, to work with on constituent services, so I know we really appreciate that, and, and their continued support in our effort to obtain financing for our wastewater treatment issues. Big week next week, I hope everybody's got it blocked off on their calendars for our, our goal setting. As a council, I'm looking forward to that and getting to know all of you, some of you even better, and some of you just get to know you and what really kind of, where your passions are and some of your ideas for the city. Looking forward to a good dialogue there. Let's just slate of advocacy. We have a long legislative session coming up. Part of the, what I want to get out of our goal setting is for us to plan a couple meetings now that everything's virtual. I see no reason why we couldn't invite Senator Chuck Thompson, as well as Representative Anna Williams, to a city council meeting or work session for us to talk about our legislative priorities, or I really just would say priority. That's for all of us to decide. I know I, we feel pretty strong on the last council that we could, you know, we have a lot of needs in our community, but by really narrowing our legislative asks to really one or two items really helps narrow the focus and the momentum of what we are really trying to achieve. We've got to kind of, you know, really pick our battles as a smaller community and what we're trying to achieve. So keep, uh, keep some thoughts out on what we're going to do in this legislative session, but, you know, primarily, I believe it would probably surround around wastewater and a major ask that's coming down the pike on that. Work sessions, I mentioned that, please be thinking about different work session topics and items you'd like to have as a council over the next year. I'd like to kind of map those out for, you know, the next, up to 12 months. I wouldn't want to go much further than that so that we can have kind of another goals, shorter goal setting like we did last time mid-year or between the two years, and then maybe we can discuss our work sessions for that next year at that time. And then I'll round it off with just some comments about, you know, it's been a heavy week and a half since the actions that happened at our national capital here a week and a half ago, and, and just, you know, it, it goes to show a lot of the dialogue and, and the push and pull that's happening in our country at this time. I think it's important as leaders here in our community that, you know, that we display that, you know, we don't always have to agree, but we, we always should, you know, respect each other and, and have a good dialogue, and, and just like we had with our COVID discussion where we had some really, you know, differing opinions and strong opinions on that issue, but we, you know, at the end of the day, we all came together and tried to find a workable solution that we as a community and leaders could all get behind, and really just continue to carry ourselves in that fashion, because, you know, that's all we can really do is, is control ourselves and our own actions and lead by example, and, and hopefully just our small little act of, of leadership in our community, you know, there's a butterfly effect and some of that. And you think about just what we've seen over the last year, both on the extreme left and the extreme right, we've really got to find some commonality in this country to come together and, and really put our nation and our communities first. With that, just, I'm going to go ahead and close out tonight's meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your thoughtful participation. I look forward to seeing a lot of you next week during our goal settings. Have a good week, everybody.